Bullshit.
We did, um, this based out of a very good bulk kitchen. Again, the living chairs stay inside. There's only five plastic chairs you can go on to.
Oh, so we even need to run it to.
Uh, it would be a good table.
Okay. So this is for the men and women?
Basically, I haven't really want to set it up. So the most part what people do and there's.
Financial report.
Uh, to the prior year, then you would be seeing a, uh, a little bit of a difference just because what I'm adding, how we do. But otherwise, it's called the name. Um, so we follow the same audit standards. We do all the same things that your previous firm did, just different. Well, um, that's what's kind of great about what this procedure is. Um, so an audit entails basically two different parts of preliminary field work and final field work. During preliminary field work, we have a team take a look at your internal patrols, who works at the village, who does what, how many reviews there are and all those things. And then, um, we base our, uh, plan for our audit based on that review. And then we do what's called a final field work, which is the actual testing, and that is looking at transactions, looking at analytics, uh, taking a look at your budget versus actual numbers and then asking questions. And then, of course, we actually look at invoices and test transactions to make sure they're in the right places. So the result before you is the annual financial report for which we give an opinion, um, that is that we give assurance that the lying items asked presented in the report are certainly presented in accordance with generally accepted auditing and accounting. And that's our claim to fame on pages one and three of this report. That's what we're responsible for as your auditors and then the village and management and the board is responsible for the financial data and fantastic. Um, I have one of our associates here that worked on your audit. She's just watching the board meeting because she's learning the process and seeks for having this be public so she could attend and see this. Um, but it was very smooth audit process. We will, we were able to get all of the information from the staff very easily and uh, but it's timely as it could have, especially for a first year switch over. So, um, I know Monica has been working hard on also switching software. So it's like new auditors, new software, lots of really exciting stuff for the village. Um, so I think this is going to help you and what I heard was all of this, um, project management and financing that if you're going to embark upon in the future to replace yours to our means from lead base to rely on replacements that we're doing across the states. I have a lot of clients working on that, consultants on that, totally understand. And I know we're going to assist helping you answer some questions with the right case and things like that. So, um, I know that, uh, you're in good hands with all of your advisors, consultants and, um, for your projects that are coming up ahead. Uh, as far as the report, uh, we issued that and then we also give management what we call management letters. It's kind of like housekeeping, uh, to help give back from our knowledge of what we do, right? We're a niche firm, so we primarily audit nonprofits and governments, so we have a lot of experience doing this. And so we give a lot more comments than most other auditors do in the government environment. Um, so if you were to look at this document, you'd have more comments on there than on your previous auditors. It's not that we're noticing new things necessarily. Um, it's just that we have a different expertise to communicate those things. And we have a different policy, uh, at our firm to work with you as management to continue improving your financial processes. Because we realize that this is, you know, like a two-way street, right? This is a relationship and we want to make you better so that it's more efficient for us to do your audit. So it's a win-win situation for us to help you get better and learn things and get that feedback from us. So we will help you work through those as the years go by. Um, and that's basically the audit process and what we discussed at the finance committee. I'm also here to answer any detailed questions if you would like, but I'm also available after the meeting.
What rating did you give us like for all?
Like if you're scared of that, which first of all.
I think you gave us something.
So I think it's somehow the, you have an opinion.
The official, the official opinion is unmodified, right? So you have a clean opinion. But there's no like unofficial rating, right? Um, I think if you wanted to compare benchmark yourselves, there's all sorts of information out there from the department revenue and even like at the national level. Um, but that's also really difficult to do for governments. Um, so the audit can exhaust some of the, for your size and it's very, very. Um, so that's just as good as you can get.
Well, to obviously this last year, uh, be advised to be after the, uh, audit that was done by the previous partner. Um, I'll speak for myself, although I would be very impressed with the year after year coming where and reading off line by line words, we might have made it a mistake in what account we put it in. And to me, that was, that was.
The entries and things.
That was, yes, that was mind-blowing. I mean, not to say that's not important.
Yeah.
That got staffed, but that was presented at us.
Yeah.
And I knew and we knew that we weren't getting a professional level opinion and assistance, things like you were four points to staff into us. Bringing up first funds, funds on the budget, capital asset policy, things for us to look at, things that, you know, we're part-time, you know, James has a background, the rest of us are CPAs. And so, uh, staff went out and solicited bids and, um, we found what I think is a really good auditor and by luck and aim and it's been great. And so I just thought I would, uh, share that and, um, very impressed with what you've given us. If there are any specific questions, you can ask your standard now and or you can, uh, you know, Monica. And then if there was a question that, um, it's Monica that can then answer, answer and shoot it out. Also, uh, standing, but.
All right. No questions. You do your policies.
All right.
Sounds good.
But I have a little simple question. Maybe it's the silver. Either you mean uninsured or uninsured. So what's the plan?
Yes, I explain that. Um, so kind of a year-end date, right? At twelve thirty-one exactly, and you collect taxes for other tax bases like the county, the school districts, the state college. And so you would admit those really quickly after the full year end. So most of those balances relate to those taxes. We have to say that these are uncladalized balances. You can do various with your bank, you can open a sweep, sweep account, you can work with them and have securities put in place. There is also something at the state level available, but it's just simply doesn't cover everybody. So.
At the end.
Yeah, low risk, very low risk.
Hey, I'm just wondering because I have a piece of information. So Travis sent over an email to Johnson Bank and said, and asked about the full collateralization of the accounts. Which they responded, I chair this year accounts are fully collateralized, given that you are in this valley. Who do I want to deal with for this question now? If that's wrong, then I, uh, did you keep this email?
Taking, they might be using the state portion that's available to you.
Okay.
As covering the rest of it, right? And so we're still going to consider that uncladalized.
Okay.
Because we have no assurance, you know, we, we don't get the state fund, audit the state fund and know that it will cover exactly everyone. So if we're giving an opinion that your balances are fully insured, right? And if on that day the bank were to fail and then the state couldn't cover your costs, then you're going to come to us and want.
No, I, I appreciate that.
So that's kind of why we not, uh, go to that whole.
But Travis didn't do that because he, that question would come out. So my question. My question, Travis, does this, uh, rely, fundamentally, does it rely on F D I C?
Yes, it's like check the, yeah, see, but then if there's more than that, then it's uncladalized.
Okay. So at the end of the day, you need a piece of paper from Johnson Banks that you will be collateralized.
Yes, exactly. And they usually do consider the state piece as a portion of that, which I understand. But we just have to disclose that it's not. So, um, it's very low risk. It's like I said, you turn that money around, ten days later, you're giving it to the county and the school districts.
It's still ten days.
For sure. Yeah, it's in your custody. So, I mean, technically, and that's ours.
It's all you.
Yeah, questions, what's on? All right. Well, it's been great. Thanks for staying. We afford a mutual relationship with you and me, fine.
And you're just going to clap and give us an A for any.
What, what you're asking, right? I mean, when you asked, when you asked a question, if we had four recommendations from the audit, you typically issue more recommendations to places. Um, the first year when we're taking on from a different auditor, yes, we typically see this. So I would say your comments that you got are pretty in line with every other new municipality you take out. Okay. Yeah. So, um, because we're coming into Wisconsin, you know, there's just different things that we're seeing. We're taking a lot of our experience from the other states. Again, that's focused on municipalities and bringing it here. So there's different policies and things like that that there's best practices on. So we're giving all.
I was impressed only getting four.
Well, I mean, it depends on how big you are.
And as well.
Better cities have more.
I want to look at what they were, some of them.
Yeah, I would say that's an A plus, right?
Bragging on it.
Just because I have this question. She's the one that greeted it.
I, I will say when I'm over signing checks, I would get a staff, you know, and how things are going, you know, and things like that. And they have pretty things to say about you as well. And when they have questions, you know, you're a lot of wealth of knowledge, experience and. You mentioned the software that we switched to. Monica's very happy that your folks know that software and that'll help, you know, her, you know, and help us a lot, you know, with that. We're doing, so.
All right. Thank you. All right. Plan Commission President McCullough, uh, he's not here. Here, if you would possibly take action on ordinance twenty-five oh three to lay the short-term rent clause. I'm not on Plan Commission. It is, I think, boom.
Okay, we got. Our side is for those that needed a, uh, supplemental, uh, ordinance, since it's alive. These kind of issues popping up in those. Uh, first of all, we thought they were going to be able to put one in, uh, stand alone. I'm trying to put up with, not in the park tours, but included in the, in the, in the set. So all the foreign regulations, all the time, we must have created all new set of, um, regulations. The time to do all this, for the village. This, um, has been completely, mostly with the buyouts, so it's very, very, very complicated. That, that, we tested the municipal program for the people.
I'll make a motion to, uh, like, accept that. When ladies, I'm a hundred members from point five, national eight, like five, national eight. Okay, finally a motion approved.
Okay.
When we accept the call favor.
Hi.
Hi.
You're my boss, you know, stand there. It's called my boss.
All right, Project Creation White House, so this community, they go to desk.
Uh, let's see, that is currently, I have something to say. Yeah, that is currently working on, um, updating information from the visual preference survey. Um, so probably late August, that we received, um, recommendations on how we run forward without, or we bring it to set. Um, the committee did approve and brings to with resolution twenty-five oh three, a change in reducing the fee from private tours from sixty-dollar minimum to fifteen dollars per person. And that, of course, is at the discretion of the White House for fractures.
Does that D change require motion?
Yes. Yeah.
It's under the industry.
Yeah, it's under twenty-five oh three, just like Franklin's.
I'll make a motion. You accept the new piece of, well, no. We're sort of jumping ahead and saying, well, we're going to send you the trade report. Boom. Comes, you see, front term, so it's.
Oh, I don't know why I made this.
It's down.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get to it.
Okay, I'll see that coming up. Probably go down the road, but you can really thank your motion.
Uh, the motion will be prided.
Yeah.
And we'll.
That's all I have.
Uh, police report. Chief.
We had a pretty busy June. Uh, let's go down the list here. I think we had, uh, over a hundred and ninety-three calls for service. Uh, we assisted Calabonia Police Department seven times last month, one, which is going to be kind of ironic, which we're talking about. There was a large crowds, uh, slash disturbance at an Airbnb just north of our village in the village of Calabonia that got out of hand. Uh, and because of staffing and because of the amount of people, we had to go up there and assist with that. Uh, some other things were traffic stops, uh, some narcotics, uh, somebody tried to pass a fake script at the Walgreens and was coming our way, et cetera. Uh, assisted Racine Police Department on three, three different occasions last month and assisted the Racine County Sheriff's Office at Corey Lake Park due to a false reported drowning because of our thermal imaging within our squad car. Uh, two wanted persons were taken into custody in the village in June. One was a suspect in a firing, discharging a firearm at a moving vehicle. Uh, so he was riding around our village. Two traffic stops of note, other than the arrest that, the other arrests that I won't mention, uh, were two individuals that were driving around our village who had, one had three OWIs and one had five OWI convictions and are driving around with, uh, revocation, uh, on their license. Uh, eight, I'm sorry, seven open garages were located by officers, uh, in the hours of darkness on their, uh, patrol. So that's always good, right? And then the lighthouse run we had, obviously, uh, that went out, we had no issues. It was good. We got paid. Yeah, we got paid. So that's good. Uh, you'll see the citations on that. Um, there was four dif, there's four different arrests and a different, uh, wanted person was taken into custody and seventy-six traffic stops.
Chief, real quick, just for the board's knowledge and public's knowledge, get better spell out in the garage door. Um, let's say it's one thirty in the morning, do you guys? Guys knock on the door?
Yeah. So usually what we'll do is we'll, uh, use our in-house record system to call.
Okay.
Or we'll have our dispatcher call and wake them up and say, hey, can close your garage door? Or we'll sit on it, or if we can't get a hold of them, we're not going to walk inside your garage and create some sort of confusion. Uh, not going to be met with something that, you know, you know, we're doing the right thing, but unfortunately mistakes could happen on both parts. So what we'll do is we'll just notate that and we'll continuously throughout our shift, continue, continue to come back and make sure that obviously nothing's missing until we can get hold of somebody.
Okay, those calls.
Me too, actually, where I live.
You have any, you said there was, you said a person with that five, what do you want?
Five.
All right. Is there any, anyone there in Wisconsin last year?
So if there's, yes, I will say this, but however, we as a village would then occur the cost of the storage. So, um, larger municipalities, like where I work full-time at the sheriff's office, uh, we had a nice parking lot for that vehicle. Uh, unfortunately, we, uh, contract through a private tow and then it goes to their tow lot. So if they never end up paying for that, it, we occur that cost. So they're no longer driving that night, you know, we, we send them walking, but we can't sit on that vehicle forever.
What, what's the, what was your problem with the cost to stop the vehicle?
I wasn't the one that actually pulled them over, those two, so I wouldn't know.
Were they enjoying cocktails at the park?
No, they would have been, no. So what they were, they were pulled over for whatever traffic violation the officer saw. And then after running the license renewed that they were revoked.
So I only asked about three of us.
Yeah, no, if they had some cocktails, there'd be some bigger issues.
I have a question as well. So when I'm sometimes driving through the village, like, um, within probably the last two to three weeks, there was, uh, Calabonia and Racine County Sheriff on James, and then there was Sheriff on Jimland. Do you get notification that we were here to?
Right, yes.
Okay, because I noticed like in your report, you say that you were out there, but you don't say that people came to us.
I wouldn't be able to run those off of my wind point system. And it'd be a breach of a siege audit. Like, uh, I can't. I could definitely change uniforms and try to do that and then, but just bringing that in, that would be sheriff records.
Okay. But you are aware.
Oh, yeah. Every single time I get a note, I get an email that they're in the village.
That's all I care about. Please email. I don't need to know.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, President's Report. Uh, if you would possibly take action on the appointment of Mary Kay Paul and Jan Russell Lee to the Architectural Review Board.
I will make the motion to appoint both Mary Kay and. Today.
On favor.
Hi.
We're going to get thirty-one calls, thirty-nine six, all right, six oh oh on that. Uh, industry report, so we will have a, I don't know if they take over that section.
Okay, so first we have the Windpoint Community in conjunction with Stroll Magazine. We'll be holding Jazz in the Park again this year on Saturday, July twelfth. Um, and as in past years, they are requesting the village waive the temporary alcohol beverage license fee of ten dollars. So we need to do.
No.
I'll second that. Gary gets us, what do you mean, what do you mean this ten dollars? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
For both.
Absolutely. Um, second, we have Anthony Begonia from Uncork will be serving wine at Jazz in the Park and also as in past years is requesting the village waive the temporary operator bartender license application fee of fifteen dollars.
All in motion, yeah. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Both. Will stand there, six oh oh on that.
Okay, and Gary Smith from Stroll Magazine will be hosting Jazz in the Park as in past years is also requesting the village waive the Village Park and Pavilion Reservation Permit Application Fee of two hundred and fifty dollars plus the security deposit of a hundred.
I'll make the motion to waive Gary Smith's school. All right, we got a motion to chair the second, all in favor?
Hi.
Both. Will stay there, six oh oh on that.
Okay, so if you see page one twenty of your packet, um, you can see that, um, Travis is recommending approval of resolution twenty-five dash zero three to update the fee schedule to reduce the fee for unscheduled private tower climbs from sixty dollars, from a sixty-dollar minimum to fifteen dollars per person. Uh, and to include a fee structure for short-term rentals of two hundred dollars for the initial short-term rental license fee and a hundred dollars for an annual renewal fee. Um, so just to clarify what was approved under the Plan Commission was the ordinance. This now is to approve the, the fee schedule, updating the fee schedule.
The second block of making that motion.
Yeah.
So.
Did you make it?
Yeah.
I did on a poll.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
All in favor?
Hi.
Anywhere else? Anywhere else, six oh oh on that. DPW and Public Works Committee, Portier, Beverly, and the Summer Woods. Are there? Come on, new chat.
I'm sorry, I had to step out there for a second. I assume, I assume we're at the report for Public Works, huh?
You can go before caller, too, but yeah.
Okay, very good. Um, so, uh, the first item is a discussion and possibly take action on the four-mile road design, uh, from the public information meeting on June twenty-fourth. I was not in attendance to that. I know Scott is at the meeting. He was and several of the board members were. Uh, general impression, we did discuss this at the, uh, last, uh, uh, Pu, Public Works Committee meeting. And, uh, generally the impression was that, uh, there was a good exchange of information. We're at the sixty percent completion level. And the recommendation is to proceed to completion of the, the study by the, uh, by the firm, uh, for by R A Smith. Uh, Scott, I don't know if you want to make any other comments or any other board members, uh, who were present, but that would be appropriate. But what we're trying to do is just move forward. The input was good. Um, and we're going to continue, uh, in the process to bring that to conclusion.
The term's point, at Public Works, nothing from June twenty-fourth, the plans over here, the plans that are in.
Yeah, they're there.
Nothing has changed. Everything that's presented to the public is what the Public Works proved to move forward sixty percent to final.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so with that piece, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. Move forward, move down, forwards.
Uh, like in terms?
All in favor?
Hi.
We will both, I would say. Six oh oh on that. And then, uh, okay.
Yeah, the second item is discussion and possibly take action on the four-mile road closure during construction. And, uh, this is kind of a minor item, but I mean, it will be a major item, uh, should the project move forward and we go to, uh, the implementation mode. The recommendation is, and there were two charts and, uh, Rob, I think you've alluded to the fact the materials are available there. What I'm looking at is the two maps. There's a phase one, phase two map that shows the closure of four-mile road. The first phase is, uh, not complete closure. Uh, so there would be traffic east and westbound on that. However, when it gets to the point of repaving, there would be closure, uh, so that eastbound traffic would be prohibited, only westbound traffic out would be, uh, permitted. And so the, uh, detour would be, uh, Main Street to Three Mile to Lighthouse Drive to get to the end of, uh, uh, Lighthouse Drive where Four Mile is and people would enter who live on Four Mile from that point. So, uh, there's no getting around having, uh, the, uh, complete closure and still keep costs under control. And it's the most efficient thing to do is to close it off when it comes to paving. And so all the prep work up to the paving, uh, I believe what I understand is that, that, that's phase one and, and there would be, you know, restricted, but uh, local traffic only, um, east and westbound. And the second phase, when paving starts and, you know, that's not a long process, whether it's a few days, one day, two days, a few days, things are, are done pretty efficiently. Uh, when we're at that phase, then it is closed and, and, uh, and there would be no, uh, eastbound traffic, the complete detour would be, like I said, three mile, uh, Main Street to Three Mile to Lighthouse. And so that's, uh, a complicated explanation. That's my understanding of it. If you have any questions on it, I could try to address them, but that's really the, the matter. It was, uh, to accept that as the road closure plan, should we go forward? Uh, so that, um, you know, the alternative would be a much more expensive kind of solution where you have flaggers and paving is done in sections and it's, uh, then that, uh, the quality control goes down. It's, it's a mess, but that's my opinion. And so the recommendation coming out of the Public Works Committee was to move it forward to the board and to accept, uh, the engineer's, R A Smith's proposal for the road closures in two phases.
I would be exactly that. I would be there for the, uh, a communication plan for residents of four-mile road. Uh, and schedule, what's scheduled, how's it scheduled and some methods to revise it so that people know exactly what's happening on that road so they can prepare for it.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. We can definitely do a daily or weekly update as to how, how it's progressing, if there's any setbacks, if there's things are moving very smoothly and going as according to plan. So that can all be done. It, I think it's just going to have to be uh, determined as to what route that would be to get that information out where everybody can get at it, you know, and see it. Since we have some issues with trying to get informed people, you know, and try to get everybody informed.
It's a kind of, you know, people should be, I'm sure these people have a specific, I don't know, website, maybe from all areas, but we're going to find out exactly what's happening, what's happening tonight.
Yeah, I've been watching other communities when they're doing their construction projects and, uh, a lot of them are using like social media. So, um, that seems to be the the fan favorite, so to speak.
Sure. Sure. Who cares many buildings.
Yeah. I mean, we can put signs out, we can put poster boards out before the project starts. If you would like information regarding updates about the project, go to this, put it on our website, do this, Facebook, do this, you know, we can do all that.
You know, how, how long this process is going to take? Would it take, how, how long do you think the roads from this place?
Um, if, if everything goes according to plan, um, probably about four to five months for the water utility to be installed and, uh, pretty much put back temporary so traffic can go through. They're going to take the one side of the lane and that's why it's only allowed to have east, westbound traffic only for that. So, so they'll be working with their big equipment in that eastbound lane or a portion of it, um, so you don't have to have flaggers. Um, probably about, maybe about four months would be my guess. No, just for the water main installation, only for putting it in and putting in the services and the hydrants and the gates and all that kind of stuff, about four months. And then, um, you give it kind of a little time to settle and then typically, once the frost comes out of the ground, uh, you start the road project and it's based on mother nature, lot of, you know, heavy rain in the spring. So the whole idea is that you don't want to remove the pavement. If there's a heavy rain, you know, there's a lot of rain and stuff because it soaks into the base. And then you have to wait for it to dry out and it just delays everything. So you wait until the very last minute to do so. So with regards to that, they'll allow traffic to go through. So with regards to that, they'll allow traffic to go through. They just, people that are trying to get to their homes, they will make every effort to, you know, make access into their driveways and onto other side streets, intersecting streets and stuff like that, but um, you are, you know, there are gonna be some hazards, so to speak. There may be some manholes that are sticking up out of the ground. There may be some, you know, some uh, bear, you know, emergency barricade fencing that is blocking off something. But I'll never be in a drive lane and you may have to swerve a little bit to get down the road, but the whole idea is that you only should be driving down the road if you live on the road or you're trying to get access to your home. Like uh, you know, the people on Windpoint Road, that, that's their only access, Hunt Club only access. You know, they don't have a back way and so to speak, Valley Trail does. You know, they can get in from Calabonia, so they don't have to like the construction, but we try to limit as much as we possibly can. And that will probably be from, I would say probably April to about September, October, probably. It's a long stretch. I mean, it's a lot of road, so. Hey, they, they probably done like two days.
That's what I heard.
As fast as, as fast as the trucks get there, they'll, they, they wanna keep moving. They wanna keep that, that joint hot. They don't want it to cool, to cool down. If it cools down, all, it's bad. So they want non-stop trucks coming in and they wanna get it done and over with. So they're pretty much, they work late and they'll probably be done like in a day or two. They'll do one lane going one way and one lane going the other way in a day, probably.
And like you were pointing out what we learned from Scott and from the project is if they would just do sessions. Then you've got a lot of, you know, places where roads are gonna have, it's gonna, yeah, and it's just not gonna.
Yeah, and then for that reason too, if you have uh, that, if you close off a portion and leave the rest of it open. Um, you're gonna have disconnect between the contractors working with each other. And the subs. So if you're digging it out and then you're, you wanna pave it. You're gonna pave a section of it and then that paver is not gonna just stand around waiting for the digger to get done with the next section. Cause you gotta move all the barricades, you gotta move all the stuff. They're gonna leave the job site and, you know, good luck trying to get them back when you wanna get it back. So it's just very, it makes it a lot more confusing, which drives the cost up.
So do you actually need a motion, Herb?
Yes, it would be uh, to, to uh, accept the four mile road closure uh, proposal by R A Smith in phase one, phase two. Uh, as, as, as they proposed essentially.
And to clarify, uh, uh, Trustee Bagley asked to clarify the two, the two uh, maps in phase one and phase two, and it's because one phase is for the water main. And one phase is for the road. Essence, they're basically the same closure, but they just describe it as such because it will be two separate, so to speak, projects. But the reason they go down three mile road is because they're required to try to take people to county highways instead of taking them down Lake Meadow or Campus or Deepwood. Even though we know people are gonna go that way anyway, so, but it's to try.
And, and Scott, what you said too is phase one is the one that takes a lot of time. Phase two is the paving, which is.
Yeah.
You had mentioned a couple of days, and that's the one with total closure.
To pave, to pave it, it would take, they still gotta dig it out and they still have to grade it, they still have to do. But yeah, the actual paving is couple of days at best.
Right.
The expectation is that you will have that in next month's financial reports.
Sort of thoughts and.
We're working on it, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's just like, that's not.
We have a meeting scheduled with Christina next week.
All right, I am gonna make a motion to consent and receive um, final items, uh, item one, village utility funding from both twenty twenty-five. I have two court reports, uh, due in twenty twenty-five. And a legal support report between twenty twenty-five. I know for firing the embassy boards to twenty twenty-five. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, Linda Beach, yeah. All right, all favor, your turn?
Hi.
Hi. All right, five forty-six.